Get it? Hammond City Council will now come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its representative republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you, Lord, saying thank you, Lord, for another day. We ask that you guide us and direct us, Lord, so that we can do the job that's set before us. We ask for all these blessings in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Herman roll call.
Markovich.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Inahosa.
Here.
Oh Pinker.
Here.
We have eight present, one absent. Number three is going to be the distribution of scholarship awards and glad Mr. Fern came up here and introduced the recipients.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening. Mrs. Myrick, unfortunately, the school city Hammond Secondary School Curriculum Director cannot be here, so I am representing the school city of Hammond on her behalf. At the time, I'm going to call up each representative of the schools, Bishop Mill Clark High School, Gavitt High School, Hammond High School, and of course Morton High School, and they will come up and talk about their student receiving the award, and then we'll take a group picture at the end.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to introduce Bishop Mill High School and Ms. Arnold.
I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity for my student to be presented with this award. My student is Nicholas Kabaki. He's been very involved with our drama department and our theater and is a wonderful young man, a very deserving recipient. He's going to be attending Purdue Cal to study engineering. So Nick, can you come up and get your award, please?
Thank you very much, Ms. Arnold. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and introduce myself because I don't see Mr. Wilson here from Clark High School. So if any of the Clark students are in the attendance, please step forward. Excuse me, I have to open up the award. Okay. Louis Burnett. Louis Burnett, Miguel Gaetan. Yes. Alicia Minor. And Stephanie Perez. Ladies and gentlemen, Clark High School.
I know Clark High School did have a banquet tonight, so that's probably where they're all at.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Andes, Mrs. Andes from Gavitt High School.
Thank you, Mr. Friend. Good evening. I'd like to also thank you for the opportunity for three of my students. The first student is Jesse Diaz. He was active in our prom committee, active student council member, participated in Rent and the APA's Musical Hairspray, Advanced Choir, and participated in many AP courses. His future plans, he plans on studying at IUN, going for his bachelor's degree in business hospitality. He plans on being successful and traveling. He plans on completing these goals with a positive thinking, hard work, and dedication as the Gavitt staff has inspired him to do. So I'd like Jesse Diaz to come to the stand. Let's congratulate him. The next individual I'd like to ask to come forward is Madeline Johnson. At school, she was active in the Student Council, National Honor Society, Science Olympiad, Academic Decathlon, Track and Field. Her future plan is to go to IU Bloomington, majoring, she's really undecided at this point, which is okay. She possibly wants to maybe go into med school and or go to postgraduate school to select something else. So Madeline Johnson, come forward. And the following is Christina Lopez. She was also involved in Ignite Soccer German Club, attended class meetings at Gavitt. Her future plans are she plans to go to Purdue Cal Umet and major in psychology. Christina?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Hammond High and Mr. Hayden, if you don't mind coming up and representing Hammond High School.
Counsel, I am Jeff Hayden. I'm the chairman of the Science Department at Hammond High School, and our students have other commitments this evening and were unable to attend. I apologize for their absence. Those students that are receiving awards are Rudy Morales, who is attending Purdue Cal, Josue Morales, who is going to be attending IU, Jesse Tilo, and, sorry, Yvette Zither. And I will make certain that they get these awards. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, Morton Senior High School. The first young man I'd like to introduce is Sam Barrios. Sam is going to Purdue University Calumet to study engineering. He's National Honor Society at Morton High School. He's part of the Gears Program, which is the Governor's Engineering and Robotics Club. He was in a part of Morton High School's drum line, and he also participated in varsity baseball. Sam Barrios. Next young man I'd like to introduce is Brock Daniels. Brock is going to attend Ball State University. He's going to be studying athletic training. He is going to be also a member of the Ball State University Swim Team. He is an Ignite mentor at Morton High School. He was also on the varsity football team, swimming team, and baseball team. Let me introduce to you Brock Daniels. Next young man I'd like to introduce to you is Angel Flores. Angel is going to be attending Valparaiso University and studying in accounting, and he is also part of the Morton High School Soccer Team. Angel Flores. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce to you Jakar Washington. Jakar is going to be attending Indiana University, Purdue University IPOI in Indianapolis. He's going to be studying mechanical engineering. He's also part of Morton High School Gears Program, Governor's Engineering and Robotics Club, Purdue University Calumet, participant in the upward bound program. He also has been working part-time at a local Target store, and also prior to his freshman year coming to Morton High School, he did present at a national conference, the Youth Leadership Conference in Washington, DC, I believe, for Jakar Washington. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, at this time, I'd like to have all the students come up at our present and take a picture with all the members of the city council.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'd like to read this letter prior to the recipients coming up and take a picture. And it says, Councilman Anthony Higgs, 5925 Caveman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. Dear Councilman Higgs, I'm writing to thank you for making me a recipient of the Hammond City Council Scholarship. I alone with my mom was extremely happy to find out that I was selected for this honor, and I am deeply appreciative of your support. I will be leaving on August 18, 2012, to attend Indiana University, Purdue University of Indianapolis, to major in mechanical engineering, fulfilling a dream I've had since I was a little boy. The financial assistance you provide will be a great help to me in paying my educational expenses, and it would allow me to concentrate more of my time on studying instead of worrying about money. Thank you for your generosity and support. You can be, you can be very well assured that I will not let you down. Your helping me, a complete stranger, has really made me understand the effect that reaching out to help others can have on young people. With your faith and investment in me, I promise you I will work hard to make you proud and extremely eventually give something back to others as a mentor. Role model, successful engineer, scholarship donor to future students like myself. I will always be grateful to you for your assistance and remember you when I pray. I ask that you keep me in your prayers as I begin this new phase of my life. Again, thank you for helping me to make it possible for a dream of becoming an engineer to come true. Forever grateful, Jakar Washington.
Okay, if everybody could come up for this picture, Jake will let us know where he wants us to stand.
Okay, can you move it on the sides? Can I get the students, make two rows? One more, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All recipients, you don't have to hang around for the whole meeting if you just want to take off. Unless you want to get educated on city council matters. Okay, number four, reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the May 30, 2012 meeting. I so moved.
There's a motion to accept the minutes by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Kowinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And it's passed. Number five, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that we accept claims, beginning with claims dated 5/31/12 and ending with claims dated 6/06/12. Claim number 2462 through claim number 2671, inclusive.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali to accept the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Claims pass. Eight, one absent. Public hearing or none? Number seven, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Received a couple of other cards. One, it says, dear council members, I would like to thank you for your scholarship award. It would help me to be successful in the next four years at Ball State University. Sincerely, sincerely Brock Daniels. And there's another letter to the Hammond County Council. I am humbled and fortunate to receive a generous scholarship that your program has provided. The scholarship will assist me financially for the cost of attendance for my future schooling. I plan on attending Purdue University Calumet, and I am certain that the scholarship will be a great help for me paying off my debts for further education. I hope this program will keep providing scholarship opportunities for students who wish to continue on their education. I was able to express my grateful and happy I am for the program's generosity. Thank you. Sincerely, Samuel Boras. B-E-R-R-O-S.
Any other communications?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
It says, memorandum to all department heads, Tom Daberton, Chief of Staff. As you know, the council recently approved changes effective January 1, 2013 to the City of Hammond's Health Plan. The city will offer three options, the PPO Provided Organization Plan, the Two Health Savings Account Plans. Attached is an overview of three options that are, that will be offered. These changes do not affect members of the Teamstress 142, the employees of the Hammond Board Authority, Housing Authority, or the Sanitary District. We are planning a series of meetings with employees to better explain these options and changes in coverage. The two meetings which will be held in the city council chambers are scheduled for Monday, June 12, 2011, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and Friday, June 15, 2011, I mean 2012, 10:30 PM to 11:30 AM. Each session will provide a brief overview of three plans and then set aside time for questions and answers. Because seeing in the council chamber's limit, please call Megan Flores at 853-6301 to let her know how many employees for the department will be attending the sessions. Reservations will be taken on first come, first served basis. Any additional sessions being planned in the coming weeks will, until the all affected employees have been given an opportunity to attend the sessions.
Any other communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Mohawks are having a swaparama on their picnic grounds for one massive garage sale. $10 gets one eight-foot table and one picnic table. All profits made from your tables are yours to keep at 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM Saturday, June 23rd. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Proud to announce the eighth annual three-on-three basketball tournament sponsored by yours truly, Councilman Higgs, on June 30th at MLK Park, formerly known as Maywood Park, and it starts at 8:00 AM on Saturday, June 30th. Any kids that are interested in being a part of this great affair may contact me, Mr. Paul Buck, or Charles Comer. And trophies, as always, are given to the first and second place winners, and also t-shirts are given to all the participants in this, as well as we give away bikes, and we plan to give away some computers. It's going to be a fun field day.
Any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Also, I would like to personally thank Councilwoman Vines for attending Safari Brainware Reception, where the students and percentiles were greatly higher, and they had a post-test and a test after, a pre-test and a post-test, showing how they improved from the Safari Brainware. So I am extremely proud of that program, and with the help of Smith, Brazil, and Warner Funeral Home and Councilman Higgs, the students really enjoyed it. We had 30 students, and I went to Maywood this morning, where we honored those students who participated in Safari Brainware. I am extremely excited about the program, and hopefully we can get some financial support and get that program off the ground for the next school year.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
It's just a comment on Councilman Higgs. You know, I agree with him. I had the opportunity to observe that classroom, the brainwear at Maywood, and instructor, Mr. Deloney, and it was really impressive. And had I had any funding left, I would like to do that at a school. But it's, it's a very, it was a very impressive program, and I think they're going to learn a lot because it stems from using computer games, which they do in their free time, as we all know. So it is a very good program.
And, Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just like to add that that program was in, in remembrance of the late Arnold Rugele, who was a community activist who resided in my community and who passed away, and we were able to secure some funding and get the program off the ground. And I tell you, looking at the overall scores and the percentiles from the students that participated, it's overwhelming, and I was just excited, and I'm just elated to be a part of something so wonderful, and I'm just glad that the students took advantage of what was available to them and the resources, and I'm hoping that somehow, some way, we can get that program off the ground for the next school year.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Number eight, committee reports.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
Councils as a whole will be bringing out 12-34 and 12-35.
Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee report is now closed.
1234, an ordinance, amending ordinance numbers 7598, 8348, and 8753, also known as Section 93.005 of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to ambulance users fees to include loaded mileage.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage and adoption of 12-34.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
This ordinance is about the City of Hammond seeking reimbursement for mileage for loaded ambulance transports at the permitted rate of $12 per mile. That's really what it's all about. And as you know, right now Hammond residents do not pay for an ambulance transport, nor will they be the ones paying these $12 per mile fees either. Insurance will pay those, and again, we don't go after any reimbursement from the residents of Hammond. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be asked, he's saying that we wouldn't go after the residents, so if the patient doesn't have insurance, they won't be responsible for paying that fee?
That's always been the case. Well, while we've been in office.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Oh Pinker.
Yes. Ordinance 1234 passes. Eight, zero, one absent.
1235, an ordinance establishing nepotism policy and contracting policy as required by Indiana House Enrolled Act 1005.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage and adoption of 12-35.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kowinski, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Please add me as a sponsor to that ordinance.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you get that, Carmen? Councilman Kowinski.
As you know, the state of Indiana passed a law regarding nepotism, and in that statute it relayed that all municipalities were to enact an ordinance by July 1, so we're following the rules again.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Just a couple comments and a question. You know, I, there's good and bad in all this, and I know I spend a lot of time because the state has spoken, but it reminds me a little bit of the gun issue that was going on about, I guess, before I was here, and that in effect said we could take guns into public places and, you know, the civic center during the circus and all that. You know, it's like anything else, it's legal, but the one thing I had a comment on is, when we were at the IAC training, I had, at a break, I had a chance to talk to the attorney for IAC, and I asked her about this, because this was kind of cooking up, I think, or may have already been passed back in January, but anyway, and she said something that made kind of a lot of sense to me. She said, "In terms of conflict of interest, you are elected to serve the people, in my case, of my district, but also of the whole city." And I kind of reflected on that, that, you know, whether you're police, fire, streets, and happen to be an elected official, which is part of this, this ordinance, your first responsibility is to the citizens that vote, that put you in office, and that you represent. So I had concerns about that, and, you know, there's, I think there's good and bad in all three of these. If you have a vendor that you're related to, they may be the best bid for the job, not necessarily the lowest, you know, maybe in the middle, but they might do quality work, which in effect saves the city money. So if they're related to somebody in the city, as I read this, then they can't, they can't bid on the job. So those are my comments. The only question I had is Section 3, for purposes of this ordinance, the performance of the duties of a precinct election officer defined in the Indiana Code 352-40.1, are they referring to judges, clerks, and inspectors? Or are they referring to, those are technically the officers. They're not referring to, what exactly do they mean by an officer, I guess?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I guess Chris can answer, but in terms of the contracts, we, as council members, we don't get involved in that process. That's why the Board of Work does the contracts, and they bid them out, and we already have something on the book. If it's $75,000 or more, it has to be bidded out. Anything other than that, the department head usually makes the decision. Am I correct, Chris? So, I mean, we don't physically get involved in that anyway.
That's correct, and there is a conference, there is a conflict of interest statute that's already in effect, if there is something that should come up, but it very rarely comes up, and usually we only ask for a cautionary. There's a form that has to be filled out and recorded. If there's anything that's even close, we have them fill it out. But the main thrust of the ordinance, which is required by state law, is direct supervision or a direct connection. So it would be improper for the council to approve an ordinance for, or a contract for one of your spouses. But that does not mean that your spouse cannot have a contract with the city through another body. It's just so there's not direct supervision.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
And I think the purpose of this whole thing is that a lot of people were giving con- giving, uh, contracts to their family members and that way, uh, they were cutting out other individuals that were possibly bidding on projects or different things of that nature. And so they were just jumping over the, the loophole and just saying, "Hey, give it to my family member because they sell this product or they sell this. I don't have that problem. I don't have any members that ever apply for contracts through the city." I mean, I think it's the greatest thing they could've came up with because the reality of it is, is that, you know, I don't feel that you should be directing anything directly towards your family and cutting other people out when it should be an open field and everybody should be level and everybody should have an opportunity to bid for anything. So that, that's very important, so.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President? I, I'd still like to know the answer to, uh-
Councilman Emerson?
Is there a code section that it references?
Because if there's a code section, because I believe they define what, uh-
They do three, three dash five, dash two, dash forty.
So if you want, I can email you that code section, but it's one of those, I'm not sure it's really gonna reach as far as, as anybody would suspect.
Mr. Chairman? I, I took this to mean that a precinct election officer, in other words, somebody who's elected as a precinct committeeman, uh, would not be considered employed by the city of Hammond.
Correct.
Correct.
It's just an exclusion, just like the sheriff's wife can work as the jail matron. That was one of the statutory exclusions, apparently that must come up somewhere, but it doesn't come up here.
Mr. President?
Okay. Councilman Higgs?
Another thing that this ordinance reflects is that if you're an elected official in the capacity of a municipality that you work in, you cannot hold both, uh, positions. So you have to either be department head or work for that department or either be an elected official, you can't do both.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson?
I, I agree with the thrust of, of what I understand, the law, you know, the code and the thrust of the, the ordinance. I just thought, yeah, my only other criticism is there's, there's like three different things in here which all could, I think, could be discussed and I, I don't even have three separate ordinances, but there's like three things addressed and I think, uh, that's fine. I mean, if that's, we have to comply with it, so I just, I, I do agree with the main thrust of, of what they're trying to say, uh, in the, in their, in the code.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Basically what they're saying is that if we don't approve this, our budget will not be approved.
That's correct.
So we don't have a choice in the matter and it's throughout the entire state.
Any other discussion? Carmen roll call vote on twelve thirty-five.
Markovich. Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Hinahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes. Ordinance twelve thirty-five passes, eight, zero, one absent.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
I just have one question for Chris. Uh, Chris, now the form that you gotta send down state, uh, when does that have to be done?
It has to be done by December thirty-first, however, because it's the end of the year, a lot of people are on vacation. I think we should probably shoot for December first, just to be on the safe side. Uh, we have not yet created the form. Um, Indiana Association of Cities in Town sent us a model form, but we can personalize
That ends our ordinances. Number ten, introduction of ordinance or, or none. Number eleven, resolutions.
Twelve R eleven, a declaratory resolution of the Hammond City Council designating that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana be established as an economic revitalization area to which deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the common counsel of the city of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Vines?
Uh, I move for final passage of, uh, Resolution twelve R dash eleven.
Second. It's a motion by Councilwoman Vines, second by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
What I understand, this is one of two resolutions because there has to be a public hearing held in, in terms of the, um, financial requests that they, they're making, but this is one of the two resolutions that we have to pass. Am I correct, Chris?
Chris, could you explain that?
The, uh, declaratory resolution would be this evening and then a confirmatory resolution would need to be passed on the twenty, the meeting at the twenty-fifth of, uh, the month.
Twenty-fifth of this month?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Actually, uh, I wanted to, uh, clear up that I misspoke in caucus. Uh, the resolution is not, uh, to approve a tax abatement this evening. It is to approve the, uh, or establish an economic right, the revitalization area, uh, at the, um, uh, Amsted Rail Facility. So tonight we have to declare that an economic revitalization area in preparation for, uh, the, uh, tax abatement that will be brought forward at the next meeting.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Uh, what happened was that there's an attachment here for the statement of benefits for the real estate improvement, so I think we, what we should've just had was the regular resolution and pass and then the second, but I don't know, Chris, maybe, you're the attorney, hey, I'm not a lawyer. I, I don't know, but to me it's just how it should've been brought about. But whatever works for you guys, I'm, I'm okay with it, but just in reviewing the document, it looks like, hey, this should've been brought, the resolution first and then the second one, because the financial aspects have to have a public hearing.
That's exactly what's, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
That's exactly what's going to occur, Councilman Higgs.
Right. The SB one forms are presented for informational purposes, supporting documentation for, um, for your information regarding the establishment of the economic revitalization area. Okay? And kind of looking forward to approve the tax abatement at the following meeting.
Yeah, I think all that's been cleared up now. That was a little confusing there, but I think everybody understands what's going on now. Is there any other discussion? Carmen, it was, uh, Dan Spitali, second. Is there any more discussion? Carmen roll call vote.
Markovich. Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Higgs?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Hinahosa?
Yes.
Oh Pinker?
Yes. Resolution twelve R eleven passes, eight, zero, one absent. That ends resolutions. Number twelve, no unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Um, on yesterday, uh, I personally took the, uh, the, the, I guess I took the position of being councilman versus cleanup community man. Well, sixty-two twenty Moraine has a for sale sign on it and it's been for, on, for sale for about two or three months. But anyway, the property owner or whoever, somebody must've died, what I'm understanding, the residents are saying to me that somebody died or whatever. But in, in the meantime, what happened was they dumped everything they had in the house in the driveway. So we have all kinds of trash, garbage, debris, really makes the community look bad. So I took it upon myself, being a friend, to clean it out and remove that because it has to be off the property line to be moved in the alley so they would pick it up. So we did get an opportunity to do that. Um, and just a little bit was left, but when I wrote about it today, I guess they, somebody must've put in a phone call because it's just as clean as a whistle today. But yesterday I spent over forty-five minutes cleaning it up. Somehow or another, Chris, and you're here, if we can make sure that we monitor those individuals that are selling the properties so that they, you know, if they're gonna dump the stuff, get a dumpster, don't dump it out in the driveway and leave it there for two months and, and, you know, because city employees are not gonna go on private property and pick it up and they can't. But I took it upon myself because it was just a mess. Sixty-two twenty Moraine was a mess, total mess. But we got it cleaned up and, and I'm grateful for that. And I don't have a problem with helping because we have cleanup week, but for people to sell property and if I was interested in the property, and it's a beautiful home, it's a brick home in a historical area in the city, but the reality of it is I wouldn't want a piece of property with a bunch of debris, uh, strolled all up and you just dump it in the driveway and leave it there. It's just ridiculous. So I just wanted to bring that up and, you know, no need to, you know, blow the whistle or whatever, give them a citation, not because it's cleaned up, but I spent forty-five minutes cleaning it up. Forty-five minutes. So we got it cleaned up and, um, I'm grateful for that. The other thing is there's a media release and it's the Hammond Parks Program Introduce Volunteer Week and the Hammond Parks and Recreation Department is looking for local volunteer groups to visit its eight summer recreation program locations during its inaugural volunteer week. Children involved in the program will participate in cleanup activities at each park such as picking up trash, planting flowers, and recreation leaders from each site will incorporate lessons on volunteering in their weekly plan. Re- Recreation Director, Lori, Leanne Monas, hopes the program Volunteer Week will show children the importance of helping out in their community and giving back to others, not just during the, the program, but for much longer. If the kids go to, go home at the end of the week with a better understanding of volunteeralism, will help out their community in some way, or just spread the information in their families, I'll consider Volunteer Week a success, she said. Currently, the Humane Society of Monster is on board to discuss the importance of volunteering in the community. Irving and Forside Parks on Wednesday, June twenty-seventh. Mills on Wheels in Northwest Indiana, uh, will also visit sites to speak about helping others. The program, which is free to Hammond residents, runs from nine AM to two PM, June eighteen to August ten, for children from ages of five to twelve. Weather permitting, participants can go throughout the week of June eighteenth. Forside Park, Pulaski Park, Irving Park, Columbia Park, Martin Luther King Park, Turner Park, Riverside Park, and Hessville Park to sign up. The program is a day camp, day camp setting, the sport, equipment, games, and arts and craft. Breakfast and lunch will be, will be provided by the school city of Hammond. Groups or organizations interested in visiting the recreation sites to speak about volunteeralism should contact Leanne Monas at two-one-nine eight-five-three six-three-seven-eight, extension three oh four. Great program.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Um, as everyone knows, uh, community and crime watch groups have become a very valuable tool in our community and, uh, I just wanted to let everyone know, excuse me, of some of the upcoming meetings that are in our neighborhoods. On Wednesday, June thirteenth, Irving Community Watch meets at Irving School, six-thirty PM, that's Wednesday. Um, Columbia Crime Watch meets on Monday, June eighteenth, uh, six-thirty PM at Columbia School. Uh, Lafayette Crime Watch will meet on Wednesday, June twentieth, six-thirty PM at Lafayette School. South High, South Hammond Crime Watch will meet on Thursday, June twenty-first, at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. And also on Thursday, June twenty-first, uh, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Gene Shepherd Center. Um, this is a great opportunity for our residents to learn how to become the eyes and ears of our police department. Um, they can also, uh, air their concerns, get answers to their questions, and, uh, it's just a great opportunity to find out what is going on in your neighborhood. So please, join everyone. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Just like a letter sent to the park, uh, board in terms of making sure that that, um, it's pressure washed, MLK Park basketball courts are pressure washed as well as the nets are placed for the June thirtieth, uh, three-on-three basketball tournament. I so move.
Second. Motion on the floor, it's, uh, pressure washed basketball courts, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Higgs?
Just like to send a letter to Mr. Nance, the principal of Maywood Elementary School, thanking him for his support of Safari Brain Wear in his past school year and that I really appreciate his participation as being a principal of, uh, Maywood Elementary. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hinahosa to send the principal of Maywood a letter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Any other new unfinished business? New unfinished business is now closed. Public expression, anyone out there? Can't pronounce her last name, it was a J.
Helen.
Helen? Is there a Helen here?
It's my constituent. Hello, my name is Helen. Ya'kula. Speaking to Mike, Helen. Mr. Higgs has gone through with a lot of things, but I have asked my quest, I thank you for that. You're welcome. Although it takes me a long time to hunt you down, but I got it. Thank you. There is in Hammond, you know, that tremendous amount of houses which are boarded up and i- i- sold for very low price and this and that. What has happened, that one is, uh, some people, they buy, buy, buy it with the cash, but some of them do get a bank loan and the bank says that it is okay, it is legal, yes, you could rent it if there's two or three units or something like that. And it's explained, it is all legal. So here comes the code enforcement and says, "No, it's not." There's a lot of people, they stand there and they lose this place, they lose their down payment if they're not clever enough to go more further on that. So the reason why I know that, I don't, I don't look for them, I don't seek for those kind of things, but I have people coming and asking me, "Helen, do you have apartment for rent?" And I start talking. He said, "I lost a two unit. I'm looking for apartment. I lost a three unit," and such and such. Well, my suggestion, it is, I don't know what you're thinking about, but I do believe that code enforcement and the bank should get together on this thing so these kind of things wouldn't happen. Do I have any answers here? Is it, is it very bad suggestion or not? And then these people leave and there's a hot, and there's an empty place standing there. These kind of people need to be protected because they are very indigenous people, a lot of them, they're very hardworking people and they are sort of entrepreneurs, but they cannot be because it has said to them that you cannot do, you can't be, you, you don't. There is a huge amount of, uh, uh, strength and, and hardworking people has left Hammond some time ago. They buy, uh, a small place and they remodel that, they try their best. Maybe the code enforcement, I mean, the building inspector is not there when it's needed, but it should be, there should be sort of kind of a program, okay? There should be sort of kind of a program, okay, I'm gonna protect you. I'm gonna see that you can remodel this and you could sell it, sell this, or you could rent that. I get to know these people because I went, I go to a landlord's meeting, which is in Maryville. And sometime, it is a late station. And there, and I get this information from there.
All right, make it quick, ma'am, your time's up.
I don't think this kind of energy should be wasted. I'm sorry, I, and I don't hear well, I'm losing my hearing. By the way, I had a hearing and I lost it in the woods, no trail. I will be better. Now, there is a thing what I have...
Your time's up, ma'am, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Your time's up, thank you.
Thank you. Bye now.
Mr. George Stoya? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Councilman Henehosa, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.